If you could just give us an outline of-
You want to wait for the permission?
Well, he's on the phone.
Oh, okay.
He'll be in a minute. If you could just give us an outline of the legislation, I think it was filed last year and it's been refiled again this year?
Yep, that it has, and of course, we're talking about an act to protect Massachusetts' public health from PFAS. So there was an inter-agency task force now probably, you know, three or so years ago. So that was two legislative sessions ago. There is a PFAS inter-agency task force that studied the issue of PFAS contamination in our environment and in our bodies, and made policy recommendations to remediate the PFAS that we, again, you know, have in the environment and then also that we continue to consume. And so that task force informed the omnibus bill that was filed last session, and it did not pass last session. The only part that did pass was relating to PFAS in personal protective equipment for firefighters. So that, and that was a very good step forward. We were thrilled to see that progress. So now PFAS in personal protective equipment for firefighters has to be phased out. And, but the rest of it, you know, there's still a lot of work left to do. And so Senators Seer refiled this bill, and there are, we think of it as kind of accomplishing two goals. We want to cut off the PFAS spigot to get it out of consumer products, to get it out of food packaging, and then also to clean up what's already in the environment, specifically in agricultural fields, and also in water. So that's the overarching bill. It gets pretty far into the weeds, specifically in regard to this consumer products, you know, to what consumer products it applies, and, you know, the exemptions and how it will be enforced and all that. So I'm happy to go into more detail or to answer any questions, but that's the overarching goal of the bill.
Yeah, when I studied the bill, attached to the bill were all the public hearings that you had, numerous public hearings across the state. I guess my question is, they're finding these forever chemicals in the blood of almost everyone, and even newborns. They're finding it. What can we actually do? The horse is out of the barn, so to speak, and we can stop it or slow it down. But what about the people that are, I mean, you know, it's a really catch 22. It's tough.
Yep. Yeah, I can't speak to how we will get it out of our bodies. I, you know, that's a really hard question to answer. And the intention of the intention of the bill is that we will consume less PFAS, right, in our, I mean, the grocery store has become a terrifying place, right? You see your bag of carrots in a plastic bag, your peanut butter jar in a plastic jar. So with the intention that we will consume less moving forward, how to get it out of our blood right now, I'm not sure.
Right.
But that's, you know, perhaps out of the purview of the legislature.
I'd like to introduce Counselor Kateri Walsh, Victor Davila, City Councilor, Zaida Gobain, City Councilor, Bruce from Angelo Pupolo's office, Bruce Adams. And we have Commissioner Carlton, who's in attendance. And we also have Commissioner Calby from the Fire Department, who's here to speak on this issue. And we also have Tracy Whitfield, City Councilor. That's on the meeting, so it's well-attended. And thank you, Tracy, for showing up. Commissioner Calby, do you want to say a few words about what has already been done as far as the Fire Department with the foam?
Sure. In the city of Springfield, we went as PFAS-free as we could go in our gear back in 2020. So we went to what was called Clear Shells back in 2020. There is a thin membrane of PFAS in the vapor barriers currently, which is sandwiched between two other layers of fabric to keep it contained, and so it doesn't have any direct skin contact. Our firefighting foam, about the same timeframe, we got rid of all our legacy foam, and now we're using Chemguard Green, which is a PFAS-free product. So that is out of the circulation now, and all the vehicles that we have carry foam on are PFAS-free. The issue is, is that you still may have some residue, no matter how much PFAS you get rid of. Even though we're using PFAS-free products, there's residual that could be in lines and things like that that you'll be seeing for a period of time. But it's very low concentration PFAS, that there's really no way to get rid of it once it's in something. So the legacy of all this started with the DuPont Chemical Company when they first developed Teflon. And that's where the whole PFAS issue started. And that led to a multimillion-dollar lawsuit out in New York where they were dumping the byproducts of that and everything. So as far as PFAS in the Fire Department, we've eliminated all of it. We have, there's a thin layer left in the firefighting gear, which is encapsulated. Our foam is all PFAS-free, and what's that? And we have three new sets that we're demoing right now that are 100% PFAS-free. It's even out of the vapor barrier. The stuff that we've already placed in service, we're seeing a little bit of increased degradation on that equipment because the PFAS has been eliminated from it. You're seeing more wear and tear because the PFAS acted like a little bit of a lubricant between the fibers and allowed them to slide over each other and gave it a little bit better durability against permeability of hydrocarbon and water. So we're seeing a little bit increased degradation, which is going to increase-
Because it's a rougher-
It's a rougher, but there's nothing that's allowing the slide. So Teflon, which was the original form of PFAS, was a slick substance, and that's why it was designed. It was slick and waterproof. So now that we've taken that out of the gear, we're getting more seepage of liquid through the gear, and you're also getting more friction fiber against fiber, which is increasing the degradation of the gear by probably about 50%.
Is our Fire Department, are all the Fire Departments on the same level on working on this, or are we ahead of the curve?
I think we're a little bit ahead of the curve because we consume so much turnout gear because we're so big. We are probably so that's been 50. Everybody has at least one set of clear shell turnout gear right now. So we've replaced 50 sets of gear a year. So everybody has at least one set of PFAS-free shells. So we're well ahead of the curve as opposed to other Fire Departments, I would say.
What are the risks and dangers?
As far as what?
If you're exposed to it or it's in your equipment?
So-
What's the danger from it?
The long-term hazards are
Hazards.
are really unknown at this point. There's speculation that it leads to increased testicular, prostate, skin, kidney cancer. But there's different theories as to how that's happening. We work in toxic environments all the time. So narrowing it down to what toxin is doing what to your body is a very difficult thing at this point. There's been tests on PFAS turnout gear, and the PFAS doesn't off-gas and give off the toxic substance until it's heated to about 400 degrees C. So at that point, you've got a lot of other problems going on if your gear's heated to 400 degrees C. So it is a toxin that we're working to eliminate, but there are so many other toxins, it's really tough to drill down as to what's actually causing cancer at this point because there's so many products of combustion, burning plastics, burning walls, burning wood in all the fires we fight, burning styrene, that there is a lot of toxins in the atmosphere that we're exposed to on a weekly basis.
Any of the councils have questions? Helen, do you have any questions or comments on this topic?
Well, what we have been advised by the State Department of Public Health really had to do with PFAS and water bodies. The Connecticut River is, has been found to have levels of PFAS in them that are not safe. And so we posted signs at the Connecticut River asking our residents who fish there not to consume fish from the Connecticut River. And that is an advisory that goes across not just the city of Springfield, but cities and towns that have to do with that the Connecticut River does service. That's important to us because fishing season is starting and individuals are fishing so that they can consume fish because needing to eat. And so that is our advisory. We have posted along the Connecticut River the advisories for our residents. So that's really how my department has become involved in this. So thank you, Counselor Santinello. I appreciate it.
Now, Commissioner, what about the other water bodies, the lakes? Have they been tested? Because people fish in those lakes too. So if they're contaminated in any way, we've got to notify people not to fish there also.
Well, what the State Department of Public Health have identified across Massachusetts, eight water bodies. And Connecticut River is one of those eight water bodies that service Northfield, Montague, Greenfield, Deerfield, Sunderland, Wakeley, Hatfield, Hadley, Northampton, East Hampton, South Hadley, Oyo, Chickaby, West Springfield, Springfield, Agawam, and Long Meadow. So those are the, in this area, the Connecticut River has been the body that has been identified with higher-than-normal levels in the water. And the advisory is-
I'm sorry.
Do not eat-
Okay, go ahead.
Do not eat American eel, channel catfish, or white catfish, yellow perch. And so they're very intentional about the kind of fish that we should not eat that is in the Connecticut River currently. Thank you.
Commissioner, I know in the reports, the Westfield River was found to be, had contamination. That's the first I've heard that the Connecticut River was, had contamination. Did that come from the EPA?
It came from the State Department of Public Health. It came from the Assistant Deputy Commissioner of State Parks, from the Department of Conservation and Recreation. And so it's it's a fish consumption advisory that has been put out. And again, there are signs that we have posted along the Springfield area of the Connecticut River, which should have been done in the other cities and towns as well.
Victor?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I do believe Counselor Gobain was first.
Oh, I'm sorry. Counselor Gobain, I'm sorry.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you, Counselor Davida. So I guess my question was regarding, and I know that Meg from the Senator's Office didn't have the answer, but so it's in our systems. It's apparently all over the place because there's plastic everywhere. I guess getting it out of our systems, we're not going to get it out of our systems until we get this plastic out of our environment. And I don't know, you know, how that is going to happen. I'm not sure if anybody from the Commissioner's Office might know some, I guess, doctors or something that can tell us. I don't know. Is there an answer to that? Does anyone have any ideas how we might be able to accomplish that? Through the chair to the Commissioner, if possible?
Well, we certainly have, obviously, and I think the City Council did pass where we are not using in grocery stores to the degree we can any more plastic. So we've gotten those out of, hopefully, a widespread consumption by our residents. But in terms of the specifics, and is there legislation that we can file or at least consider that might help us strengthen how we get these plastics out of our system for our residents, or at least do the education around the risks, which I think is also important. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Thank you, Mr. Chair. That's what I have. Thank you so much.
Excellent. Victor?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you to everybody for being here today. First, it's the first thing that I'm learning about this, or this is brand-new to me. And I thank Brad Hogan and Senator Seer for putting this forward because this is obviously a critical issue. Commissioner, good to see you. Quick question. So I believe it's called the PFAS. That's the problem, the chemicals. I won't even dare to try to pronounce them because I think the actual name is pretty complicated. But it is a chemical. How does, help me to understand how does that affect the firefighters? Is it through the water system, or?
No, through the gear they're looking at as a possible cause of cancer, absorption through the skin from when the wearing of turnout gear.
Oh, okay.
Or through, in years past, you used to do a lot of foam drills, especially if you were a firefighter, airports, they use a lot of foam in aircraft firefighting. So there's always a lot of foam being pumped onto the ground and things like that, and people were always covered in A triple F aqua film-forming foam. That one of the things that makes that foam slippery is the PFAS chemicals.
Got you. Now, is there any turnout gear there that is PFAS-free that we could use, or?
So we've been using PFAS-free shells since 2020 in the city of Springfield.
Okay.
We're demoing some 100% PFAS-free gear right now. The only PFAS that's left in the gear that we have since 2020 is a membrane which is encapsulated inside the vapor barrier of the turnout gear.
Okay, okay. Do you foresee a time when it's going to be PFAS-free for guys?
We're testing it now. The state law says everything has to be PFAS-free by, I believe, January of '27, is what the legislation says. The manufacturers are having trouble meeting that deadline right now. They're going back and forth on it as if they can actually meet that deadline to manufacture 100% PFAS-free gear. As I was explaining to Counselor Santinello, the problem when you take PFAS-free out of the, PFAS out of the turnout gear, is the gear degradates faster.
Okay, okay. Thank you, Commissioner. This is all brand-new to me, and, you know, we need to make sure that our guys are well protected. And thank you for, it seems like we are ahead of the game a little bit here since 2020. So thank you for that. Commissioner, good to see you. Quick question. You talked about this being in the plastic packaging for the foods. It would seem to me that whatever we do here, it seems to be like the, what's the word we're looking for, the advance of of science that will be critical on this. But for practical reasons, how can the person at home to go to the grocery store, is there any practical recommendations we can give people watching to decrease the exposure of PFAS once they go to the grocery stores?
Well, thank you for the question, Counselor. As you know, the City Council years ago, plastic is no longer allowed in some of our grocery stores at this point. But I'm going to defer to Meg and ask her if she might be able to answer your question in a more concrete way than I might be able to because of the filing of the legislation. Maybe that's something you can, one of the councilors?
Yeah, I have a couple of, hi. I have a couple of thoughts. I just, first of all, I am very interested in how Springfield has gotten plastic out of grocery stores. Do you mean plastic bags?
Correct.
Yes.
Got it. Got it. Okay, okay. So I wanted to go back to, so I can't remember at this point who said it, but someone mentioned how it's important to educate the public, and that is a component of the omnibus bill. There are funds allocated, a remediation trust fund, and then also funds for an awareness campaign to be conducted by the Department of Environmental Protection and the Department of Public Health regarding the health impacts of PFAS exposure, including routes of exposure, consumer products known to contain PFAS, PFAS in firefighting foam, facilities known to be sources of PFAS, and assistance programs for PFAS remediation. So I think that PFAS, one of the primary issues with PFAS is that I've met a lot of scientists who could explain this a lot better than I can, but it rose in popularity because it's a forever chemical. And, you know, the bonds between atoms are, I mean, I'm going to show you that I'm a lawyer and not a scientist here. But they don't, they don't break down. So I think that getting it out of the human body is exceptionally difficult. I don't know if it's possible, but again, that's beyond the scope of my expertise here. So I, so the awareness campaign is in here. The firefighting, under the impression that firefighters, we are, I'm not a firefighter, inhaling it by skin contact, by inhalation, as was already mentioned, you know, particularly when these substances are exposed to high heat. The state law applies only to gear. The firefighting foam is still, has not yet been signed into law. That is included in the omnibus bill that we're currently working on. So hopefully, I mean, it does sound like Springfield is very far ahead of the curve here, which is really a wonderful way to protect your firefighters in the greater community and public health. But we're still working on foam. And another reason why it's particularly important to get out of firefighting gear is not just to take care of these essential, you know, community members who are protecting the rest of us, but also because the runoff further contaminates the drinking water. So that's important for a number of different reasons. And the, so in terms of what leads to human consumption, the inter-agency task force, the recommendations of which gave rise to the bill, found that there are certain products that we that most directly lead to human absorption. So, and those are the, that's the first category of products to get to be in which PFAS will be prohibited. So those include child passenger restraints, children's products, cookware, fabric treatment, personal care products, rugs and carpets, textiles, textile furnishings, and upholstered furniture.
Meg, would you recommend that people that have that in their Teflon pans? I mean, a lot of people kept those. They're using them now. They should get rid of those now.
Get rid of them. Get rid of your, so especially because as we've already mentioned, you know, high heat is, leads to increased rate of transfer. So definitely get rid of your non-stick pans. They're very, though I have some, you know, safe cookware, very hard to clean. So just buckle up and get ready for that. But I'd rather that issue. And then also cutting boards because you're literally chipping away at the surface. So cutting boards is another low-hanging fruit. But in terms of-
Plastic cutting boards.
Plastic cutting boards, yes. Plastic cutting boards. And, which of course are the easiest to wash. But, you know, there's a reason why PFAS-laden products came to rise, right? There's a lot of convenience here. And then, but in terms of the grocery stores, so the bags, that's great for the environment. It's not as great for PFAS contamination because the grocery bags, that's not what actually is touching your food. So your food is, I mean, think about your bag, you know, you go to the grocery store, you get a bag of carrots. That's been in a plastic bag. That's PFAS. Your raw chicken breast is in food packaging with PFAS in it, right? So it's very difficult for the consumer to avoid this, which is why the legislation that would prohibit the use of food packaging with PFAS in it in the state. So that's, that's really, I can't emphasize enough how important this legislation is to pass into law.
Thank you, Meg. Ms. Chair, I have one more question for you, if you indulge me. We have anybody here from the water and sewer, but maybe Commissioner Carlton. We talked about the water, the body of waters. I know you mentioned, Commissioner, that we're putting advisories on the Connecticut River. Do we have, you know, I know this is more like EPA issue, but is there going to be some sort of a testing schedule that we're going to be doing? Not only on the Connecticut River, but throughout all the body of waters throughout the city? And how does that impact, I guess I'm saying, the, or water source too? Because recently, City Council, we had a long discussion about the quality of water. So Commissioner, you want to take a crack at that question?
Me, sure. So if, the state does test the water bodies in Massachusetts. And they put out the advisories when the PFAS exceeds, and I think it's .22 milligrams, maybe Meg knows that better than I do. But there is a certain number that they're looking at. They put the advisory out, and they let us know, particularly around bodies of water, how we should be, how the signs should look, what we should be putting up, how we should be advising our residents. I'm not sure, Counselor, if that answers your question, but the last advisory that was put out was May 23, 2024. I expect that we will get new test results probably in the month of May again, as they begin their testing usually in April. So hopefully, we will get new numbers that I can share with you.
Excellent. Thank you, Commissioner. Mr. Chair, I would just finish by saying that perhaps we should have a conversation with the water sewer. Just be part of this conversation because this seems to be a big deal.
Yep. We're going to be with them next. The next, we're going to have multiple meetings on this to follow the legislation through. Tracy, do you have?
Yeah. Thank you, Ms. Chair. So I got here, I'm worried about all plastic, all water, all, and then I see Meg drinking out of plastic twice. And I was like, does it affect all plastic? Like, why is plastic bags and the plastic that touch food singled out as opposed to like bottled waters? And like, I always hear like, if you leave your bottled water in the car in the sun, you shouldn't drink it because it causes cancer. I don't know if that has anything to do with PFAS. So now I just got real nervous about plastic. Somebody came over here the other day, like, you shouldn't be drinking out of those plastic cups. They said it on the news. You should get all glass. So now I'm just like a little bit concerned, and I don't know if there's an answer for that.
Tracy, I I observed today the K-cups that are made out of plastic.
Mm-hmm. It's like, and they touch-
It's in the machine, and they heat up to a high temperature. Where do you think that plastic's going in your coffee cup?
It is going down my, my, I guess, every day. Every day.
I mean, Tracy, when I, when I first started working on this bill, I wanted to get rid of all plastic from my house. And, you know, and again, some, some sources of PFAS contribute to more exposure, right? The cookware, the cutting boards, probably the K-cups. I don't know at what, at what temperature the transfer takes place. But I, but I wanted to get it out of my house. I didn't want my kids to drink out of plastic water bottles. I didn't want to use any plastic food storage and this, that, and the other thing. And but then you get to a point where you see that it's really unavoidable unless we get it out of our food packaging, unless we get it out of our clothes, right? Any long-lasting nail polish, PFAS is making it long-lasting, right? Waterproof mascara, PFAS is what's making it waterproof, right? I feel like I always have streaks in my face now, but so, really, anything with magical properties, right? Wrinkle-resistant clothing, that's PFAS in it. So it's really, it really feels unavoidable, which is why I did give up and I am drinking out of a plastic water bottle right now. But I hope that one day, in the not-too-distant future, I can drink out of this water bottle, and it will be PFAS-free because of all of the good work done by so many people in getting this bill that will eventually be signed into law.
Yeah, I just had a whole panic attack. Just now, like, put that down, Meg, put it down. Yeah, I just had a whole panic attack. It's now like, put that down, Meg, put it down. Um.
I know, and I I I feel you, and I I mean, I have that feeling with my children, right? They they consume a lot, they interface with a lot of plastic, and I replaced their water bottles with aluminum water bottles, and then they started throwing it throwing them at each other in the car. And you can really hurt each other. You can really hurt someone with an aluminum water bottle. So it's it's definitely tricky, and I hear you.
Um are there any cases in Springfield that has been directly cor- like cancer cases or any other medical cases that has been directly um correlated to PFAS that we know of in Massachusetts or Springfield?
I I don't know about Springfield in general, and I think it's really uh the issue of causation was already was already addressed, right? It's really um it's really hard to say this person got cancer because of this, right? Um this person got colon cancer at age forty because of the rise in microplastics and toxic chemicals therein. Uh so but the there is, I'm sure you're all familiar with the asbestos litigation. Um there there is PFAS litigation, and the legal profession anticipates this being, you know, uh the next asbestos type of, you know, class action or multi district litigation or whatever, whatever it may be.
And then I'm glad that um, thank you, Meg. I'm glad that um the chair said that we'll have water and sewer, because I'm just trying to like, I wonder if our um HAA five levels and PFAS interacting, does that have any like impact on us and the quality of our um drinking water? Um I don't know if you know, Ms. Helen, but um yeah, it's like, I'm just gonna continue to pray to the Lord to keep us safe, because everything has an impact. So I don't know.
Yeah, I would agree. I think you're talking about transmission, uh Meg, and and so what is um, do we have any data that looks at PFAS and transmission to humans? And the impact as far as our cancer rates are concerned? Is there any data out there that we can point to and say, yes, this is the rate of transmission from plastic PFAS or fish to human cons- to humans?
Um I'm sure there is. I don't have it off the top of my head. Of course, this bill was written some time ago now. Um but you could look at the the PFAS interagency task force recommendations. Um they took a deep dive on this issue, and I and I remember at some point last year, I started to kind of uh look into it further, and there's plenty of available data online.
Commissioner Wall. I think, yeah, um, you know, until Counselor Santinello brought this forward and talked about the meeting, I was totally unaware of PFAS. I would think majority of the people have no idea that their house is so dangerous. I have K cups. I have plastic
Well, you don't know about K cups yet. I'm just saying.
Uh and the uh the warning about the Connecticut River, that's news to me too. So, you know, I'm just concerned about media awareness for this, and I also want to know how much support you have for this in the State House.
Meg?
We have a lot of support. Um we but you know, participating in this sort of meeting is really important, because a lot of people don't know about PFAS and the harms associated. So um it's really important to be having the these conversations and to, you know, to build more will um for this sort of effort. I there, we have a lot of, we have a lot of partners, uh environmental partners, public health, you know, or pub- uh environmental advocates, public health advocates. Um we have good relationships with the manufacturers who are working with us collaboratively collaboratively.
There's gotta be people on the other side of this, though, I would think.
Yeah, yeah, there, yeah, there always 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 people, always folks on the other side. Um but you know, so far, they've been, you know, willing to work with us and to figure out how we can come up with a bill that's mutually, you know, that that works regularly.
Is that the stage where it's up for a vote?
Um it's not, it's no, we're so we just started a new two-year legislative session on at the beginning of January. And then committee assignments were made, and all the bills were assigned to committee just in just in March. And there'll be a hearing on it, and that's a that's a good opportunity for uh public involvement. Um you know, if you if you you can participate in the hearing, you can sign up to offer testimony or provide written testimony to the committee. And then after the hearing, it'll, you know, the the committee will make a decision on it. Last year, the Public Health Committee reported it out favorably, so I anticipate that they would again uh for this session. And then it would go to Senate Ways and Ways and Means, and last session, we were just unable to get it out of Senate Ways and Means. So hopefully this year, we can um actually bring it to the floor for a vote.
Meg, how can we help as as a community uh to maybe get petition drives going or and get involved with these public hearings? Uh because uh Western Mass uh is affected just as uh just like the rest of the state.
Yep, yep. I I mean, yeah, all of the above, yep. Um if you sign up, if you go to the legislature's website, and Brian, we have, you know, we have there's emails, so let me know if you need help with this. You can sign up for alerts about the bill. Um it's not really obvious how to do that. There's a little star. If you type in the bill number on the legislature's website, it'll take you to to its page, and there's a little star next to the bill number, and if you click on that star, it'll prompt you to create a login, and you can uh sign up for updates about the bill, so you can stay apprised of when the hearing is um and whatnot. So yeah, continuing to build just a awareness um about PFAS, right? We have this awareness campaign in the bill, um but we also need some more grassroots support to just um gain support for the bill. So uh so we can have our awareness campaign. And that, yeah, appearing a testimony and um, you know, I encourage you to reach out to the to the chairs of the Public Health Committee and, you know, share your support. So yeah, all of the above.
Officer Wall.
I just wanted to ask Commissioner Calvi, is there uh an effort among Massachusetts chiefs on supporting this legislation or?
Uh they su- they supported the some of the legislation, and there's some issues with some of it. We weren't really consulted before they took the action to take PFAS out of the gear. So no one consulted with the manufacturers or the fire chiefs before it was done. So we're trying to play catch up on it a little bit in some areas. Uh here in Springfield, we were ahead of the curve with it, so.
We we work closely, the per- the professional firefighters in Massachusetts, um who the the advocacy group uh that works on behalf of firefighters, they have been closely involved with the effort, so.
Yes, not the fire chiefs. That was the question.
Yeah.
Okay, yeah, I was just I was just adding.
I would think that'd be important with this.
Yeah, I I I just want to say, yeah, oh, could I just want to make one statement and then I just want to say that thank goodness we have Helen Carlton and we have Commissioner Calvi. They are really on top of this. And um I just, that's that's what I want to say, yes.
Mr. Chair, thank you so much. Um I guess the question that I had, I know that um uh Meg is is looking forward to the uh educational campaign that's gonna be in the bill. But I'm wondering if there's anything that we can do right now, like, of course, you know, my neighborhood council. If we could have someone come out and talk to our seniors at the senior bingo about this um and the residents even now before the bill is passed. I know this has been an ongoing issue, and I'm so grateful to the city council who passed the legislation to remove the plastic bags from the grocery stores. But as Meg said, you know, it's in the food and the food packaging, um the K cups. I just looked it up, yes. So they have these um uh the stainless steel K cups that you can put coffee in, but there's a whole I guess chemistry around that, that you have to know exactly how much to put.
I bought those. I have.
I think I have some of those. I'm gonna start using those too, because they're probably cheaper too, because you can get the car anyways, I digress. Um so is there a way for us to maybe possibly start, you know, doing the educational campaign um with our residents, putting the word out, especially with the um the fishing season coming up? You know, making sure people are aware that, you know, it's not safe to eat the fish that's in the Connecticut River right now um and the other bodies of water possibly. I'm not sure who can answer that question.
Uh Helen?
Well, uh, we have certainly happy to do, um I would ask uh Meg if there have been materials that have been developed that we can share from an educational perspective. But certainly happy to have conversations, uh Counselor, around uh the consumption of fish uh as far as the Connecticut River is concerned. As I said, we have posted signs. Um and you should be able, they they are very present. Um I will make sure that uh my staff has the signs that are visible right now, because I know we're just coming out of the winter season. They may have been blown down or but I will I will check on that. But I'm happy um to ask my environmental health staff who work with me to come out and do the education. But I'm gonna go back to Meg. Have you developed materials we can share with the public uh from the legislative perspective?
We have, the legislature has not, but I'm happy to reach out to. So DEP and DPH have have, you know, been, so Department of Environmental Protection and Department of Public Health have have both been doing work in this space. So uh and they have a much larger presence in the community, so I'm happy to ask them. And then I can also, I can also ask some of our advocates, because we have some very involved advocates, Clean Water Action. Um uh the Sierra Club, uh the Environmental League of Massachusetts, all these organizations um have been really devoted to this. And then another resource, uh the the Silent Spring Institute um has some good uh materials and resources on
Who silent? Who did you? I'm sorry.
Silent, um here, I'll drop it in the chat.
Okay.
You have a question?
Yes, uh, thank you, Mr. Chair. Stephen Howard, McKnight Neighborhood Resident. Uh pertaining to the last discussion. This committee is basically what I used to describe to my the young folks I used to work with is we are the ones that we've been waiting on. What I would suggest to you, Mr. Chair, is that once this is loaded up on the web, that you send the this, the link to this meeting to not only all of your counselors
Yeah.
who could then send it out to their contacts. But that you also reach out to what they call NCAC, which is a neighborhood uh uh N C, N C, uh neighborhood uh councils and whatever it is. Send it out to them, and you can send it out to uh Ed Whitley, because he chairs that coalition. So you send a link to this meeting, and you ask him to send it out to all of the neighborhood councils. And uh the different organizations, for example, like uh Counselor Whitfield co-chairs the C three meetings on Tuesday. That's one good place that she could share that link, because they have something like about maybe thirty different organizations, law enforcement, who actually appear on ev- uh every Tuesday. This uh coming Tuesday will be held at uh the the library, Mason Square Library.
Yep.
And that would be a good way to get to you to utilize social media to get this word out. And even like the, I would guess, and and uh right now, they have contacts. They have people that they that that they, I don't know what social media they use. They could take this link and and send it out, and that's one of the most effective way to get it, because once people go in and they listen to this meeting, they will be properly informed, and then they may want to get active, and then they may want to share it with their contacts. So it's a multiple, multiple all the way down. But uh a couple of other things I wanted to say about that stuff, right, Mr. Chair?
Thank you so much. Anyone else uh want to say something uh in regards to Bruce? Okay, um Meg, you've been fantastic. Uh we've learned a lot, and uh this is just the beginning. Uh we're gonna continue the discussion. It's so important. Uh as a city council, we want to go into the neighborhoods and inform the people, like Steve said. Uh this is a very serious problem, and we've got to address it before it's too late.
Yes, agreed. I do have to run, um but it was lovely spending some time with you all. Um I'm sorry for any panic I have caused. Uh Brian has my email, um and I am available for any further uh further discussion.
Meg, thank you so much. Uh uh Commissioner Calvi, any final thoughts?
No, I'm good.
You were fantastic. Uh Helen Carlton, fantastic. Thank you. Thank you so much. You're all fantastic.
Thank you.
Thank you. Goodbye. Thank you.